We have the green light. So I will call this special meeting of the Lake Mills City Council to order on July 24th of 2023. Misty, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Ms. Quinno?
Here.
Mrs. Bishop?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a special meeting here tonight to talk about the updated City of Lake Mills Comprehensive Plan, which has been updated for 2040 and is recommended by the Plan Commission for City Council adoption. So I wanted to just walk through our process tonight, just to kind of recap from our discussion from last week and make sure we're all on the same page for the meeting tonight. So we have two items. The first is a discussion decision on the 2040 Comprehensive Plan that has been recommended for adoption by the Plan Commission. And the second item is Ordinance 1256, which would be the first reading of that Comprehensive Plan. So if you remember from our discussion last week and from the memo from Attorney Drescher, we, as a council, have several options. One would be to accept the Comprehensive Plan, as is. A second would be to accept it with non-technical changes, so if we would have any of those. A third would be to reject it outright. And a fourth would be to refer it back to the Plan Commission to address any issues that we might identify. So if we decide to accept it tonight, then we could entertain a motion vote on that for the first agenda item, and then we would move to the second agenda item, which would be that first reading. If we reject it, I guess I hope we won't outright reject it, but if we wanted to refer it back to the Plan Commission, we would need a motion during this first agenda item and a vote to refer it back, and we would need to identify the issues that we want the Plan Commission to address and send back to us. So does that make sense to everyone, that process? Okay. So all the documents that we have that were attached to this agenda item, we have, were the same as last, at our last city council meeting, right after the public hearing when we had the discussion. And I note that there's two maps, Map 3-2, which is the future land use, and Map 4-2, which is the bicycle and pedestrian network. And I believe that those were just posted just because we had some discussion about them, and so they're just kind of highlighted for us if we want to discuss them further, but there's no changes to those maps, is my understanding from what was in the plan documents that we've all been reading. Okay. So with that, I guess I'll just open the floor. I would suggest that we maybe just discuss and identify any issues or questions that we have. We have our planner here, along with our city manager and city attorney. And if we get to a point where we've maybe started to identify one or more issues that we feel we might want to refer it back to the Plan Commission, we can do a motion at any time. But I think it might be good for us just to maybe kind of flesh out any issues or questions that council members have first. So is there anyone that has a question or an issue that they'd like to discuss?
Mrs. Curler, I'll start. I've got a couple of items.
Yes, Mr. Fields. Great.
I'll use the one example that I had last week at the council meeting on 7/13. I know in other areas of this document, it says the city will consider establishing a room tax, where in this one page, it says that we will establish a room tax. So that would be one that I would like to clean up for sure there. I would like to see it stay consistent with "consider." There are two other areas. After our meeting last week, I guess a lot of my questions aren't going to entertain in it. On 6/25, no, I'm sorry, that was the wrong one. 6/29. I know after our tour of Milton Street also last week, we talked about some of the streets that were expanding to put parking or bike lanes. And in this document, it's saying they're wanting us to revisit our public improvement standards and actually reduce street widths from 32 down to 24 feet in areas, which is actually two feet narrower than the Milton Street that we toured last week. So I guess I'm just kind of concerned is, where does this come from? Where we're trying to actually improve some things and put in bike lanes and maybe strategic parking in different areas? And then, weather correction, maybe just to toot our horns, that we're strategically located, they talk about one world-class hospital in Madison. We actually have two of them if we count O'Conne Walk. They have an amazing cancer ward and Aurora Health there does a great job. We might want to consider putting both hospitals. That kind of toots the horn for the City of Lake Mills.
So, page 6/29, that middle one that you mentioned, that was regarding the, kind of in the middle of the page, regarding the street widths?
Correct.
Is there kind of a question there, maybe, Mr. Fields, on, you know, what was the reasoning for the recommendation?
Correct. Because, I mean, we were just talking about on Milton Street when we were down there, that street was 26 feet wide. We're looking at taking that one to 32 so we can do sidewalks and improve the parking. And in this document, it's actually wanting us to go to narrow the streets up to 24 feet, which was actually two feet narrower than what Milton Street is right now, if I use that as an example. I guess I'm just kind of looking for clarification. Why would we want to go narrower with some of these side streets?
Is there any clarification, maybe, that staff could offer on that? Was that something that the Plan Commission specifically highlighted? Or maybe it is written certainly as discretionary, we may wish to do this.
I don't recall it coming up at the Plan Commission. What page, could you say the page again, please?
6-29. It's right in the center paragraph.
It's 142 of the PDF, Mr. Daley.
Oh, do you have the page number in the PDF?
Mm-hmm. It's 142 of 193.
142.
And for myself, I'm just using the Milton Street tour because that street's at 26 feet right now. So that would actually be narrowing it when we were talking about widening it a little bit.
It looks like our planner's getting up to the microphone. While he's doing that, Mr. Fields, can you repeat the page number on the room tax language you were talking about?
Yes, just one second.
7-13, I thought. Okay.
Yeah, that sounds right.
Thanks.
And then the one with the hospitals would be 5-5.
Okay.
Where it's the bottom of the page.
Ms. Curler, can I speak to the street width issue?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. So one of the things that we're seeing here in this section is talking about housing and housing affordability, workforce housing, et cetera. This is, again, not mandating, but suggesting that we should, as a community, look at street width as a way to control costs on development. Obviously, there's long-term implications of that, right? Less maintenance, et cetera. There are trade-offs between parking on street. Not all streets are intended to have, I'll say, demarcated bike lanes on them. Narrower streets do slow traffic, but we're talking them in conjunction with trying to address missing middle issues, missing middle housing issues. Narrower streets reduces overall infrastructure cost. That can bring down overall housing cost because it costs less to serve each lot. Again, there are situations here where a 32-foot-wide street will be the most appropriate based upon other community priorities, right? Parking on street and bike lanes, potentially. But narrower streets certainly will have, are intended for areas where there are less traffic volumes, trying to reduce traffic speeds, and it would be appropriate to have bicycles and vehicles, I'll say, living in harmony to a certain extent because they're intended to be neighborhood streets, right? And again, these are always things that have to be evaluated in conjunction with the fire department. So again, this is not specifying "thou shall" on this street. This is, with new development, and especially when we're trying to achieve other goals, evaluate if the city's typical street width is most appropriate in that application.
And I would note that on the very next page, there's a concept diagram for workforce housing that maybe relates to what you just said, where there are alleys and then there could, you know, hypothetically be narrower streets as a result because the alleys are serving the garages.
Yes.
Okay.
I can understand that. And just because my wife and I were fortunate enough to find a home like this, when we first got started getting married, and when you have the workforce housing, you tend to have single-car garages or small two-car garages. So your driveways and streets tend to fill up in a hurry then.
Again, this is guidance language to say "evaluate it." I would hate for someone to say, "This must be done because it's in here." Streets will still be evaluated by the Public Works Committee. They will still be evaluated by the city staff. These conversations would be evaluated by Plan Commission, ultimately the council. Again, this section of the document is talking about workforce housing, controlling costs to reduce providing infrastructure to serve housing, right? So again, I think the context of where it's located in the document, it's one piece of a, for instance, this could be done to reduce costs. One of the things that can be done in workforce housing is eliminating basements, right? Because that's an added cost. Of course, we're accustomed to basements, but if we are trying to truly look at controlling costs of housing, that is something that should be evaluated, right? Just as narrowing streets should be evaluated. This is not saying, and that's going back to historic development patterns for turn-of-the-century communities, right? Narrower streets where there really isn't only maybe parking on one side of the street. In some cases, no overnight parking in a community, right? That there's limited parking. So again, these are things that should be evaluated when we're, what is the priority of a certain development, right? Is it workforce housing? Or is it non-motorized mobility? Or is it parking for residents, right? So again, all of those issues have to be evaluated simultaneously.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bishop?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Curler. I don't remember on Plan Commission discussing the specific width of the street in terms of footage, but I do remember the context of the conversation that Mr. Wolf has just reiterated. And one point to that is the alleyways that he's mentioning that we discussed on Plan Commission as well. We only actually have, like, I think, four or five houses that have that feature in this neighborhood, so that would, in this city. So that would be a new feature to be added to future neighborhoods if it were to be considered. Mr. Fields, I have a question for you. And with the context of this conversation tonight, would you prefer to see the square or the footage taken out specifically? Would you be okay with changing the language to say something like, "The city should consider the width of streets in relation to new development and cost?" Do you want to limit it to new development only? Because I didn't see this conversation as being like, "We're going to go back to Milton Street and specifically reduce the width to 24 feet." I saw in our conversations as being for new developments and neighborhoods. So would you be open to adding some of that other, more specific language, Mr. Fields?
Yeah, just, I guess I'm looking at that at the overall document because I think it's really pushing, you know, making the, pushing the higher density across the city. And I'm just, I'm looking for the benefits of this because even the proposal, which you have in here, is a subdivision that's right across the street from a park, which would tend to have more street parking because that's where you're going to get it anyways. People are going to use the side roads to park and walk across because it's always busy down there during big events. So I'm just trying to find the logic of it, and there is a big push I see in this whole document to increase density in the city.
Okay. Is there anyone else that has an issue they'd like to comment on or talk about? Mr. Waters?
I think there's probably three issues that would stop this document from moving forward tonight. One was addressed by Mr. Fields already. That was the hotel tax, the wording related to that. Also, the wording related to Page 510, "Construction of a new city of Lake Mills wastewater treatment plant," also "creating a stormwater management utility." I think those two issues have a huge tax burden on the community, and the wording there should be more of a review process, not a "we will do this" process. I did go back and review the tapes on the two meetings that addressed this issue because there are huge tax implications. One is like a $50 million plus to build a treatment plant. And the other one completely changes our tax structure within the City of Lake Mills. When I went back and reviewed those two videos, they did not talk about this subject. So I'm not sure how this got in here. Maybe it was just based on them reading and reviewing it, but it seems like it should be reviewed by the Planning Commission.
So the wastewater treatment plan discussion was one that was had early on. Duane Van der Moes was there as well to talk about, these are the things being evaluated and they're, I guess, taking a very complex issue and boiling it down is something's going to, is going to need to be done related to wastewater treatment. And so the language in here is to, I guess, to align with, something's going to need to be done and continue to study it. The language related to considering a stormwater utility is carryover from the last plan, and we weren't explicitly told to remove it. So therefore, it stayed in as a, something to consider because stormwater issues are the priority, obviously, within the community, is preservation of our natural features, especially the lake and the watershed. This issue of stormwater management comes up constantly, and how is that to be handled? And again, as the carryover from the last plan was to consider a stormwater utility, and it was never, I'll say, removed. So it certainly can be removed.
So on those two issues, if we're going to keep them in, I think the first one should review, should read something to the effect of review options related to the wastewater treatment plant. And the second one should be more of a, "Consider a stormwater management utility," just as you said, Dustin.
I would agree, Mr. Waters. As I'm looking at this section, as you pointed it out, it does appear that those are, those statements are making decisions sort of on behalf of the council. And like you said, they are big-ticket items that we would want to evaluate.
So I can, I have things to go through, chapter by chapter, but we can probably get to where we make our recommendations and then go back to that phase, I guess. But these are the three issues that I think would make this go to Point 4. I don't think anyone wants to reject this tonight. I think we're looking more at Number 4, which is an action to refer the recommended plan back to Planning Commission with requests that the plan be modified, revised, or amended. So if we want to continue with this discussion point, and then we can go to that, or however we want to do that.
That's what I would propose, is that maybe each of us take turns. If you have particular items on your list that you'd like for the group to consider, and then we can talk through them maybe a little bit further to see if there is a consensus or majority view on which ones we might want to include if we were contemplating referring this back, and then kind of go into a more formal motion. That make sense? Ms. Quinno, just because I'm looking at you, do you have any items that you want to raise at this time?
No. Actually, I was looking at this document the way that Dustin has made it clear to be that it was more suggestive than declarative. So a lot of the, I mean, there might be some little things, but it's not so much that I would be willing to put a pause on this because as far as I'm concerned, this is just, like you said, it's more an idea. And then what they do with the idea, that's going to come back to us anyway. So as far as I'm concerned, it seems to be, I think, you know, the Plan Commission and Dustin and his associates have done a fantastic job of doing what they can to make this be as ironclad as possible. And if we're going to, I guess, if we're going to go and nitpick little things along the way, I feel like that's just stuff that can be taken care of in, you know, in, he could do that change right now in his computer, but I truly feel like it's, 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 it's based on what I've been reading, and I've taken a ton of notes, that it's good the way it is. So I'm going to probably be on the other end of the spectrum of Mr. Waters and be a little bit more agreeable to what has been presented here.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I will raise a couple of issues that sort of caught my attention that I wanted to talk with my council colleagues about. The first is right at the end of Chapter 3, the future land use map. And we did hear from our attorney that that is a bit more, I guess, statutory, you would say?
Regulatory, yeah.
Regulatory. And so I have identified at least two items that I think I would appreciate the Plan Commission taking another look at. One is looking at if there is any recent land development that reflects a particular land use that then the future land use map doesn't accurately reflect. And one example I can think of is the new Summer Ridge Apartments along County Highway B and Corner B and Brookstone, where the future land use map, and I can't even remember how it does have it identified, I think, commercial or business or something like that. And clearly, it's multifamily. It's been developed as multifamily, and I think that, they went through all the processes to get that zoning. So I think that's a correction I would want to see. And then we had a public comment last week, a written public comment about the property that's located north of St. Paul's Church, and the future land use plan shows that is industrial. And apparently, there's some, maybe some information that came along with that property that indicated that it needed to be for school or institutional purposes. So maybe there are others. I don't know if the Plan Commission would, you know, take a fresh look at that. Maybe they would see something else, but I would like them to, I guess, update the land use map to address the public comment and also anything that has clearly an established land use that the city has approved. So that's one. And then the other area that I had a concern is in the implementation section, Page 93, there's a list of, actually, 92 and 93, there's a list of things that the city can do, and they're generally framed as, you know, you can do this, you can do that, here are ways that you can monitor and advance the plan. And at the top of 93, there's a pretty long bullet that talks about annually reviewing the plan. And it's a very prescriptive process that says that we will do, the city council will do all these things, and we will have a public hearing, and we will look at it every year. I felt that that was a little bit overly prescriptive. I'm not aware that the council has been doing that with the current plan, but I'd like to see that written more. And, you know, here's, if the city council wanted to review it on an annual basis, here's one way you could approach it, is you could have it on your agenda, and you could invite public comment. But I guess I didn't care for that that seemed to be very prescriptive, that somehow we're required to look at it every year. And also, it kind of suggests that then the council could take some action to change it, where really, I think we would need to send it back to the Plan Commission if we wanted to change it based on a review. So sorry, that was a little bit wordy, but assuming it's not some kind of a statutory requirement, I know it's not in our code to do an annual review, I would suggest to soften that language along the same lines as the room tax. So those are my two. I had a few others, and after listening to Mrs. Quinno, I'm thinking, you know, yeah, we don't need to bring in our own edits to the document. The Plan Commission and our consultants put a lot of time and effort into this. So maybe there are things that I would tweak, but I'm fine leaving those alone. So the two issues I brought up about future land use map and implementation are the ones that I'm most interested in. So Mrs. Bishop, I don't want to overlook you, but I know you spent two years and lots of time and reading lots of different drafts on this. Now that you've seen the final version, is there anything that you would want to comment on?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, Mrs. Curler. This has been such an iterative process. I've seen, you know, we've talked a lot for a year at the Plan Commission. I think it's nice to have a fresh set of eyes from the council on this document. I think the comments tonight have been good comments. I think they're insightful. I think everybody's made good points, and it, at this point, doesn't hurt for the Plan Commission to take one last stab at it. So that's my point of view right now, and if there's something else, I'll certainly chime in. But thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Curler? Yes. I have a question. Yeah.
So as I was scanning through this document, it occurred to me, and I don't know, maybe I'm just overthinking this, but I noticed that there is a difference of perspective between what we call workforce housing and, what did you say, Dustin? It was middle income?
No, no.
Missing middle?
Missing middle is the type of housing that, you know, more duplexes, townhouses, smaller, when I say smaller apartments, I mean like fours, four-unit apartments, like duplexes, quads.
Sure.
Those are the types of products that really have not been developed in Lake Mills, but really nationwide for a number of years. They were very common in the 60s and 70s, and somehow kind of developers kind of got away from that product, but we're finding that that is a desired product, an affordable product. So townhouses is an owner-occupied product, so it is a way to get into homeownership at a lower cost than detached, single-family. So, yeah, the missing middle, from a housing product perspective, goes hand-in-hand with workforce housing. And one of the focuses, and I know it's a carryover from the previous council, but with what you see in there related to workforce housing was how to get people into homeownership. The state, unfortunately, when they think of workforce housing, they think of only apartments. And that's what they're going to prepare to provide funding for. But that doesn't necessarily address the issue of getting people into assets that, and so we get into the people who, entry-level teachers, people in public service, firemen, policemen within your community, who obviously, you know, will have employment and can pay higher rents, because you're seeing rents at 1,500, 1,600, 1,700 or more a month. But if we had a housing product that was in that neighborhood that they could get into homeownership. And so that is the goal of workforce housing, to meet that need within your community. We're also hearing it from your employers, this need for this type of housing. So, yeah, missing middle is the housing product that goes hand-in-hand with kind of workforce housing, the issue.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying because I was a little confused. Also, I didn't know if there was another term for workforce housing that we, that's more, I don't know. For me, workforce kind of comes across a different way than what, the public doesn't really understand necessarily what workforce, they think maybe Section 8 or something to that effect. And I just want to be really clear on what that is.
Yes, which is why we focus on calling it workforce housing because it is not necessarily affordable housing according to the HUD, the federal HUD definition, or what would be considered affordable housing based on county requirements. It is workforce housing to meet a specific need within the community.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to add a comment off of that discussion because I thought it was really compelling, looking in the public was really compelling, looking in the, um, public comments, which hopefully, um, everybody's had a chance to read the appendices, and we had a really robust comment process, including the survey, and there are people who say they can't afford the homes here in our community, um, or they're priced out, and that might be a reason that they would leave. Uh, there are, there is the workforce that would like to have a home rather than paying rent, but there are also seniors who would like to downsize but still own, rather than rent an apartment, you know, put their retirement monies into paying an apartment, they would still like to own but have. And so I, I think, yeah, the terminology can be a little bit confusing, is it for the workforce, but it might also meet the needs of seniors who want to downsize and still own. Um, but I thought the report, or, and the, the plan, does a really good job of trying to address both of those needs, at kind of both, you know, new homeowners and, and aging homeowners.
Thank you, and that's that middle, missing middle component. When we say the missing middle, somewhere between a single-family detached house and somewhere between a traditional apartment product.
Mm-hmm.
Right, that's the middle that we, that most communities just don't have much inventory on. And, um, it, it is something that we will, that communities will have to work hard at attracting to developers to build. Um, and, and it's showing, um, the desire for that product within a community from a decision-making level, but obviously also the consumer wanting to, to have that product,
Are there any other questions or comments from council members? Mr. Waters, you look like you want to say something.
Well, I would like to comment if, if, if the vote goes one other way, and then, um, I mean, at, on Chapter One, as I, as I look at the demographic of over sixty-five age group, in the City of Lake Mills, that demographic has slid 2.3%. Why, in that same time period, according to the World Bank, in the United States, that actually has increased by, uh, 3.9%. To me, it seems like we should have more context on this topic and, and understand that trend, why is it going a different direction in Lake Mills, what actions can we take to correct that? Um, I think we all understand that that age group is financially very sound, and, for the most part, and that, that's an age group that we would like to see stay here in Lake Mills. And right now, that, that age group is leaving Lake Mills to go to other communities because of reasons, reasons which I can state some, but I think it should go, it should be reviewed, and it should be part of this document.
Okay. Um, yeah, one of our, our issues in Lake Mills is, we don't have a product for them to move into.
Right.
We don't have a product that they're, that they want to, that, that they desire. Um, and, you know, I think probably reaching out to, to, to that demographic will be important, find out what are, what, what are they looking for? And then how can the city be, um, a conduit to helping, kind of, fill that void, right? City's not really the builder, right? So how do we get builders here to, uh, how do we attract someone for that product, um, that, that they're looking for? I, I think the city provides the amenities and the quality of life that, that seniors are looking for, you know? Um, by and large, it is a very walkable community. There are a lot of, you know, parks, natural features, a wonderful downtown, um, but some things are a challenge. We don't have a grocery store downtown anymore, that can be, that can be a challenge for, um, for some seniors. So, yeah, I, I think it's an important thing to, to kind of flesh out some more.
Another aspect to that, and like you said, we, we don't know precisely why maybe that number's gone down, but I'm really glad that you flagged that, Mr. Waters, because that caught my attention as well. And I was like, that doesn't, it doesn't match my perception of demographics, you know, in the world, and why would that be the case in our city? Um, and we certainly had public comment during this process for, from seniors wanting a community center, and that a lot of other neighboring communities have a senior center. Um, and so that may also be a reason why, you know, if somebody can find, find another community that has more affordable senior housing and a senior center, maybe that's, you know, where they'll head.
Also in Chapter One, the, uh, the City of Lake Mills vision statement does not match with, uh, we actually talked about that in our last meeting.
Last week, yeah.
That it doesn't match with our strategic plan. I would like to see those things line up, of course.
Okay, um.
I think it's, I mean, it, it clearly states that this is the City of Lake Mills vision statement. It is not.
So the question is, who developed which vision statement? Because the strategic plan vision statement was developed by the council. The vision statement that's in the comprehensive plan is a carryover from the previous plan that the Plan Commission evaluated to see if there were substantive changes to it. So I guess we have two different entities developing a vision statement, and for two different types of documents. Um, a comprehensive plan obviously has a longer planning arc than strategic. A comprehensive plan, it's, I fully believe should have strategic elements in it. Your strategic plan is your, is the council's work plan for the next three to five years. So, to rectify that, we either bring the Plan Commission and the council together to develop a vision statement to, together, or we're taking one versus the other?
Or it needs to be labeled appropriately.
Uh, we can certainly put both in there and label them individually, if, if you feel that would be, uh...
What are we going to do if it changes for a strategic plan? I mean, like, this is a document that goes beyond the, the strategic plan's, uh, scope. So when or if our strategic plan changes, are we then going to make them change it in the comp plan?
It's a dated document, so it's as of the date that the document's dated.
I've been thinking about this a bit, Mr. Waters, since you brought that up last week, and I thought it was a really compelling point. Um, but we also, we also, and we also had a, um, a long discussion about, you know, what does this document represent, and then what is the city council's authority generally? And I guess the more I think about it, I don't necessarily have a problem that those vision statements are slightly different, um, but I, but, um, this comprehensive plan doesn't make any reference to the fact that the council has a strategic plan, or that we regularly adopt a strategic plan, you know, that works with this document. And so I'm wondering if that might be another way to address it.
And I think that goes to Michelle's point, that, that it is updated from time to time. The city, the city council document is updated from time to time.
Yeah.
But currently, the strategic plan is this.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that fair, Michelle? Mrs. Quinell?
You can go, Michelle. I, I'm wondering if you're relating it to the business world, and if so, can you give me an example of the business world and how that would be correlated with this situation?
In the business world?
Yeah.
When you have a dated document, you're always stating the facts at that time.
No, 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 I mean the visions, the two visions. Like, is there in, because in a school district, it's, everybody's on the same thing, but when, in a business, you have a vision that, that, that comes from the top, the board, the...
At the Board of Directors.
Board of Directors.
Yep.
Um, and then, are there, within the business world, is there some, i- is there a, uh, comp plan, similar?
When the Board of Directors lay out the vision, that goes throughout the whole organization, and there is no altering of that vision.
Okay, and then, when that is put together, um, do subsequent, um, like, cut, sorry, I'm just trying to put...
All the departments support the vision throughout the organization. So if the Board of Directors says, this is our vision?
Yeah.
Then your marketing department, your sales department, your accounting department, they all write business plans that support that vision.
Sure. I just don't know if this is the same situation. I feel like...
Government and business is different, right?
Yeah, and I, I, I see where you're going or where you're coming from in terms of trying to build this comparison, and maybe some level of similarity, but I, I just don't know that we can do it the way that I think that you would like to see it. Only because with it being a dated document, one of the things that I can think of is that if we look back on what the city council wanted back in, when was the last one, 2007?
Uh, nine.
Nine. What, what we wanted, what city council, and whomever was on city council in 2009, completely different vision or, uh, completely different strategic plan than where we are now. And I don't know that it's necessary for our input and vision to be part of that document when it's going to carry on well past our time. In that, well, I don't know if we're all going to be here for the next twenty years, maybe we will, but the fact of the matter is, is that most things change. And I don't know that it's necessary that we have to put our stamp of approval on this document for this time of three to five years for a strategic plan, when in fact it goes well beyond that. Do you know, you know what I mean? Like, it's, it feels more permanent, the, the comp plan feels more permanent, well, suggestively permanent, in its longevity versus what part we play in that process. We play a small part in this process, which is completely different than what we normally do, but it's a small part. And I just don't know that we're having to put our stamp...
Not sure if I'm green with that.
That's fine.
Um, I mean, there's, there's definitely a, uh, the strategic plan basically lays out the next five to ten years, as far as council's concerned. Uh, these are the actions that we want to, we want to work on, or we've got community feedback.
Mm-hmm.
I think this document really needs to include that community feedback and, and be part of this document, which in a lot of ways it is, but in some ways, uh, it could be tweaked.
So just including the community feedback might be something, but they do also include the community feedback that was part of the comp plan creation. So I'm not sure if there's a difference in the, in the feedback that may have made a difference in how, what information is presented. I don't know. Is, is there a difference?
They were done at different times, so certainly there, there would be, um... I think that we can certainly attempt to, to, uh, implement or incorporate the, the strategic plan into the, the current comprehensive plan, and, and identify them as, as such. Uh, the strategic plan, they should, they should jive a, a bit. We wouldn't want to adopt a strategic plan that was in, in opposition to our comprehensive plan. Um, so I think that they probably line up more than, um, than, than they don't. Um, the strategic plan is a little, the strategic plan vision statement is a bit shorter, uh, a bit more concise than the one that's included in the comprehensive plan, uh, currently. Um, but I think we can certainly incorporate them both. The strategic plan is kind of informing, from my perspective, what staff's immediate priorities should be with a look to the, kind of, the short to medium term. And the comprehensive plan is kind of what we, as a community, envision, the, the goals and objectives over the, of the long-term, what we want to maintain, what we want to, what we want to change, where we want to get to, what we want to preserve. Um, but I think that both are useful, uh, and there's certainly no, no issue with memorializing the current strategic plan into the current update to the comprehensive plan, so we could certainly, um, make an attempt at doing that, um, when we, if, if it goes back to the Plan Commission for, um, re- review of changes.
One thing I, I think, um, was a timing issue with respect to this particular update is that this council was working on our strategic plan and updating it at the same time that the Plan Commission started the update, and we authorized them to do it. Um, and then we shared with them the results of our strategic plan, but they were probably already passed the vision statement at that point, so I don't know that there was any, um, conscious direction from us or effort on their part to match them up, um, or whether there would have needed to be, but it, it just so happened that we were both sort of working on our plans at the same time. Mrs. Bishop?
Yeah, so the language here of the comprehensive plan vision statement is, Lake Mills will be multifaceted, residents will live comfortably, lively business centers, thriving industries, unspoiled natural areas, and it goes on like that. So my question to Mr. Waters is, is there something about that, that you would change a word or a sentence completely to be more in line with the strategic plan as you see it? Or is the whole thing just in opposition to the strategic plan in your mind?
No, to be honest, I, I didn't go through it line by line. It, I read maybe the first couple sentences and said, well, this doesn't line up with what the vision statement is, and, uh, I, I didn't go any further, to be honest with you.
I, if I may respond, I just see the vision statement that's written down as being so broad, and I'll just say it continues, you know, to say the city's downtown will continue to be the civic and commercial heart of the city, which are all things I think we would want as a council, and that the Plan Commission has agreed that they want. The solution that I would propose here and tonight would be to include reference to the council's strategic plan that we pass in that vision statement in this document, but not to, um, whole cloth change the Plan Commission's vision statement in the document. So that's how I would propose addressing it, and then maybe adding the strategic plan as an appendix item or a separate reference, like we reference other city documents.
I appreciate that suggestion, Mrs. Bishop, and I like it, um, especially because this document refers to lots of different plans that the city has and that the city has developed, and the strategic plan just isn't one of them that's mentioned, so at a minimum, it seems like it should be mentioned. And also, as I'm thinking, I'm not looking at our stra- strategic plan vision right now, but when I think back on what it says, some of the things that I know we emphasized are sort of being fiscally responsible and a sustainable community, and those seem like the kinds of things that would be more in a council strategic plan versus this, um, you know, higher-level aspirational, um, document coming from the Plan Commission. So, and I, again, I guess that's why I don't necessarily have a problem with them being different, as long as they're not in conflict, if that makes sense. Mr. Fields, so I'm not always looking your way, so speak up if you want to say something.
Will do, thank you.
Can I move to another topic?
Sure.
If we're good there. In, uh, Chapter Three, I've identified, uh, page three thirteen. Um, mobile homes are mentioned in the multifamily residence outline, but it seems like the mobile homes have grown quite a bit in, in Lake Mills as a percentage, based on, uh, the information that's on page six fifteen, where it's like ten percent. I'm wondering if the mobile home should have its own outline of policies and programs, uh, because it seems like there's significant growth within Lake Mills, and it should be identified as such. And it doesn't seem like it belongs in multifamily residence, anyway.
Um, we certainly can add language that relates to mobile homes. The reason you're seeing that, and maybe it needs a clarifier, is that some units were added to existing mobile homes, that, that they were brought in, um, or units replaced, which is why it may look like it, it kind of skews the numbers a little bit. Um, the zoning code, uh, has to have a mechanism by which to address mobile homes, and it is a, I'll say, I'm going to incorporate it as a multifamily, um, development type. Um, there are very specific requirements in the zoning code regarding mobile home development. Um, minimum number of square feet for the lots, um, down to specific setbacks, uh, and, um, amenities for the development itself as it relates to recreational facilities, a, a certain amount of square footage per, per unit has to be set aside for those things. So, in the, um, uh, comprehensive plan, we can certainly call them out more. Um, are you looking for the Plan Commission to provide recommendations on how they should be handled in the future? Are we, again, from the last plan, mobile home, um, regulations, zoning code regulations were, were part of the priorities with, with multifamily, which is why they were incorporated in the, in the, uh, in the zoning code. So I'm wondering, maybe... So I'm wondering, maybe we need more le- maybe we need a, uh, some contextual language about why it looks like mobile homes have had a significant increase in number?
It seems like maybe it, it should be included as a, a residential land use category. And like the single family homes have policies and programs. And I turn the page, same thing with two family residents. I turn the page, same thing with multifamily residents. I would think that mobile homes should probably be listed in a certain similar sense. And I know that in the city of Lake Mills, in the next 10 years, it'll probably be something that we'll be working on, especially down at Sandy Beach. And, uh, maybe that, that type of, uh, guidance would, would help.
Okay.
Because this document, of course, is for, for future planning and, and it seems like that's an area that will be, uh, part of our future planning. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Mrs. Bishop?
Um, yes, I'd like to jump in here with a question. This is for Mr. Wolf. And I don't think we've discussed this previously, so I'm kind of hitting you over the head with it. I apologize. Um, with the, the mobile home park being under the multifamily zoning designation, can somebody put in a mobile home park as of right, as long as they meet the ordinance requirements, like 10 acres or less and all of the other, um, mobile home permitting, it looks like? Or is there a separate conditional use permit or other zoning, um, I don't wanna say hoops to jump through, but steps to take, really?
Um, by conditional use specifically. And then again, there are, I'll say, very detailed requirements for them, um, you know, with, yeah, within the ordinance about, uh, utilities, common spaces, um, they have to have, uh, facilities on them for, uh, inclement, I'll say just inclement weather. And then, uh, so I'm sorry, I just don't have the code in front of me.
No, I know, I don't either, which is why I said I was hitting you over the head with it. So thank you for helping me understand that better. I appreciate that.
I had a, a comment on, uh, chapter nine, implementation. Actually, another comment. Two particular places in the, um, in the table of, um, you know, who's going to do what, when, kind of thing. Um, it's table nine dash one. On page nine eight, uh, land use, there's a whole bunch of, a, a long list of ordinances to potentially be reviewed. It looks like they're all gonna get done in 2023, which I thought was perhaps not too realistic. I know the Plan Commission is anxious to start working on zoning changes once this is approved, but, um, and I don't know if this is substantive or not, but maybe, you know, 2023 to 2025, something like that, give a little bit of time for that list of things.
I think that's a very good point.
To be worked on. Um, and then, um, on page nine dash 10, um, under second line, considering the expansion of the electric service areas as the city grows, that one doesn't actually have a timeline, so I don't know if it's okay to leave it blank or if it's just an ongoing or if, uh, maybe the city's aware that there's a particular need where we do need to be evaluating that.
Uh, yeah, I'll say, um, discussions with Paul Hermanson and, and other city staff was trying to have the electric service area aligned with other, uh, kind of growth boundaries and service areas of the community, that there's, um, some, I don't say gaps, but, you know, there's some, some areas that they are responsible for that don't align with some other development plans. So, um, I, I, to rectify some of that.
So would that make it more of an ongoing then? Because it's kind of like as the city grows, as other things happen, you would, you would do this at that same time?
Yes, uh, we do try to have, I'll say, a timeframe because, you know, not, not to hold someone's feet to the fire, but to make sure that we are moving forward on, on implementation measures.
So I don't have a suggestion for what that date should be, but I just noticed that it was blank. And so I, I just thought I would highlight that in case we wanted to have that built in. And I'm also curious if perhaps these are, would fit in the category of non-substantive? I don't necessarily feel like we need to send it back to the Plan Commission to ask what timeframe they wanna make ordinance changes. Um, but I don't know if that would be substantive or not. Mr. Waters, I recall you said something about having something in every chapter, so what chap- what chapter are you on now?
I was given a couple of chapters, but I would like to talk about chapter four a little bit.
Okay.
On page four six, it, it seems like there needs to be a revision made because it, it attaches a, a, a comment to the bicycle plan that is not part of the bicycle plan. At the top of page four six, after the comma, if consistent with the character of the neighborhood and in consulting, in consultation with subordinate boards' recommendations, that's not part of the bike, of the sidewalk plan. So that needs to be restructured, I guess, if the Planning Commission wants, if the Plan Commission wants to have that in there.
I'm sorry, Mr. Waters, what page?
Four six.
Four six.
Six.
Graph on four six. So you're saying that that, that statement does not correctly reflect what's in the, the sidewalk plan policy?
Correct. Yeah. It was added.
Okay, I'm gonna clarify again, cause I just got there. So you're saying the sentence, or the part of the sentence that says, "In consultation with the subordinate board's recommendations" is not part of what the long range, or sorry, the, uh, Lake Mills transportation plan actually calls for?
I'm saying, "If consistent with the character of the neighborhood and in consultation with the subordinate's board recommendations," that was added and was not part of the, uh, of the plan.
Right. If I recall right, when we were working on College Street, it was, "If it's practical." And then there was some other, um,
Yeah, I think there was, there was some context related to, uh, like if it's close to a school, community center, uh, public access, that type of thing.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there, there's priorities listed in the plan and then subsequent lower priorities in, included, uh, will be installed if practical. That's the current plan.
I'm okay with the statement. It's just misleading the way it's stated.
Mm-hmm.
Bicycles, where do I start?
Give us a page first.
I, I guess.
And now we have a map, too.
I guess it was, uh, it was stated in the last meeting that, that maybe the Planning Commission didn't wanna state examples, but yet there are some examples stated. So maybe one way or the other, um, I, I guess I would like to have it rebuilt the way it was, but, um, for the, for the general purpose of, uh, of getting grant money. Um, if you have this built into the comprehensive plan, it makes it easier for us to do grant requests. And at the very least, the map that's referenced in tonight's, uh, agenda should be included in the comp plan, which it's currently not.
Was it supposed to be?
I, this was actually, this was a, a topic of focus for the Plan Commission. And I would say the general trend, as Mr. Waters stated, was towards, um, general statements rather than specific references to, um, you know, examples or routes of, uh, preferred routes or, um, desired routes, things of that nature. So I think this, that, that, this topic specifically, if that trend towards being more general with it, it does not match up with the city council's priorities, then I think it, it certainly would need to be looked at by the Plan Commission again, um, because it, it did remove a number of specific references and that map specifically, um, from the draft of the plan.
And those references line with the, uh, Jefferson County Bike Plan and the Lake Mills Bike Plan as well, the current plans that are in place. I know that, I think Jefferson County's up for review right now. And Lake Mills, it's been assigned to the Public Works Board. And after this document's produced, the Public Works Board will be reviewing the, the bicycle plan.
That's correct, yes.
But they're looking kind of for some reference here, so.
So are there, um, particular pages or sentences that you feel, um, should be revised to reflect the concern?
Well, there, there was a, uh, in the original document, which isn't referenced here, but it was, uh, page fourteen, so it would have been page four fourteen. It listed, uh, in that original document, um, all the street names and, uh, of where the, uh, where the bike lane should be, be considered for the future. So it included, um, on-street facilities for Main Street, for instance, Lake Owen, Lakeshore, CP Avenue, American Way, Fremont Street. So I'm sorry, I don't have that document with me tonight, but, uh, I think Mr. Wolf has referenced. He knows where to find that document.
I do.
So I had noted something, and I don't know if this ties to what you're talking about, Mr. Waters, but on four ten, four dash ten, um, uh, right above, near the bottom, right above County Highway A slash Topol Street, there is an example. It says, "For example, providing on-road bicycle facilities along Oak Street across Lake Street." And I didn't have a chance to look and see if that's consistent with the bicycle plan, but if it's not, I think that sentence should probably not be there.
It's not consistent, from what I read. And that was an example that I was referencing, that where they said examples weren't being used, but here is an example that was in the plan.
Okay.
So we're talking here.
Well, it was just, that was the only one I noticed, so maybe, maybe there were others that you came across.
Yeah, and again, it's important that sentence does say "could provide." So that section of the document talks about, I'll say, kind of key corridors within the community. Uh, like on, for CP, it does talk about its, you know, expected, um, uh, extension down to Unshaven. And it references map four dash one, which is kind of the roadway map. It does talk, as you had mentioned, about, um, uh, County B, Lake Streets, you know, Madison Street and Oak Street, that the city could provide on-road bike facilities along Oak Street across Lake Street.
Where is that?
I guess my preference is that we use the, uh, the existing documents and the existing, the existing plans and, and not ad lib.
Okay.
There's, there's plans that are already designed for this. And, uh, that's what we should be using in this, in this comp plan.
Well, I appreciate you bringing that up. And I didn't, um, compare the two plans, uh, or, you know, the bicycle plan with this text, but I did note, when I see key street and road corridors for this section, and then I look at the road network map that we have as four dash one, and Oak Street is not an arterial, arterial or connector, you know, would not be part of that road network. And so there, again, that's where I was like, well, why is Oak Street mentioned here? These all, these other ones, all, all are certainly arterials or collectors. That would make sense to be listed with that map.
And it is important to understand that while certain roads may be, um, collectors or minor arterials for vehicles, that may not be a good idea for bicycles.
Oh, certainly, right.
So that distinction is, is very important. Whereas, um, Main Street or eighty-nine obviously has bike lanes, uh, as a part of it and sidewalks. You're probably not gonna be taking your small children on-street on eighty-nine. Right? So we wanted to highlight potential other alternatives. Um, that would be appropriate, I would say, for slower speed roadways. Cause there's bicycling as recreation and bicycling as kind of transportation or commuting. And, you know, riding on eighty-nine is not meant for small children. But there are other routes that could be explored that way. Or, I'll say, if a CP Avenue connected to Unshaven and that's reconstructed, maybe it should have an off-street path, right?
Mr. Waters? What street is eighty-nine?
Main Street.
It's Main Street?
Yeah.
Okay. So we do have bike paths on.
Bike lanes. You have bike lanes on there.
Okay, we have bike lanes.
Yeah, bike lanes.
It's just south Main.
I just wanted to clarify that. I was confused for a second.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Ms. Bishop, absolutely right. It's South Main Street.
Right.
Right, not, not north. And again, alternative routes could be a ferry drive for that. I mean, so, again, the distinction is, some, some routes, while they are through streets, through the, the whole community, may not be best for bicycle mobility. It may take combinations of streets to make that work because of, uh, travel speeds, travel volumes and such.
Mr. Wolf, I agree with everything that you've just said. But I think that's the role of the bicycle plan, to lay that out rather than the comprehensive plan, to be trying to identify what those possible corridors, what those possible alternatives might be.
Um, so map four dash two that was removed was referencing what was in the bicycle plan. And the Plan Commission said, "Let's remove the map and just rely on directing people to the bicycle plan." The one bit of language in there is it references, um, could be Oak Street. We can certainly remove.
Well, I would like to see the, the map included, at the very least, for, for grant opportunities. My preference is to include the street references as it was originally laid out. But at the very minimum, the, uh, the map should be in there.
Okay.
The, the problem I'm seeing with the map, the incongruity here, is that if this map was lifted from the bike transportation plan, when it, as we're looking at it now, it looks like the proposed transportation is from the city of Lake Mills Comp Plan 2040. So I think the lap, the, the map just needs to be relabeled appropriately as an appendix and added item, so that it's very clear. If I'm just looking at the map by itself, I know this is from the bike transportation plan that the comp plan language is referencing, not that the comp plan itself is identifying these proposed routes to be the bike routes. And I think that's been the point of contention with our constituents as well.
And is that accurate statement? No disrespect, is that an accurate statement to say that map four dash two is from the approved bicycle plan from 2005? That that is the bicycle and pedestrian network from that plan?
Thought it was, yeah. So as long as that's what it is, and it should be labeled that way.
Okay.
And
Go ahead.
And I, I guess I wanna circle back that there was an overwhelming response from the survey that bike facilities are very important and it's desired by the residents of, of Lake Mills. So I, I don't want to discount that in the comp plan. And I wanna make sure that we're addressing and giving that issue proper, proper, um, recognition.
I, I would say that is probably why the, the staff, more specifically the planning staff, when putting the, the updated draft together, related to bike and ped facilities, I think probably had a little more robust language or recommendations in it. But respecting that the Plan Commission said, "Let's reference the detailed document." So it was, I'll say, pared out.
Okay.
So I'm looking for, yeah, I'm gonna be looking for the council to like, if, if you are sending this back to the Plan Commission that there's, I'll say, something, some recommendation coming from the council related to this item, so the Plan Commission has direction?
Yeah, we, we've kind of been throwing things out there tonight. I don't know if we have consensus on things. Um, so at some point, we need to circle back to that, I think.
Right.
We've at least kept a running list here of, of items to bring up to the Plan Commission so that they can discuss them, um, and see how they, you know, react. Cause it is a, it is a partnership between the two bodies on this document.
Well, and I would think from a, um, from the perspective of our role in this decision-making process, I think we would need a motion tonight that lists whatever items we tonight that lists whatever items we are referring back to the Plan Commission that we are asking them to address, and that would need to be passed by a majority of the council.
That's how I understand the process, yeah.
I agree, Mr. Waters, that we maybe need to go through the list. I'm curious if any of them would fit in the non-substantive category so that we can shorten the list, and then we'd have to see if there is a consensus or a majority on the other ones to send it back.
And move on?
Mr. Oh, did you have something?
Anything else on transportation? Did you have something? Go ahead.
No.
Okay. My next one might be more of a question, Mr. Wolf, but as I look at the Chapter 5, which is utilities and community facilities, is there a way to recognize trends? I guess my thought process is pickleball is a trend that's exploding right now. And when you look at, when you look at Arizona, the, two years ago, there was tennis courts everywhere in Arizona. Now they've all been transferred to pickleball. And I recognize that on page 53, Rotary Park does not recognize the two pickleball courts that are there. But that is a trend that's exploding right now. Is there other trends, and should that be recognized in this section? And is there a thought process there? I guess it's kind of a question, but it seems like it should be identified, and it should be part of our long-term planning.
If it was missed in the inventory, we pulled from the most recent corp, Comprehensive Outdoor Rec Plan, which is detailed, which we feel is kind of where that should come from. We can certainly talk about the trend here. I guess based on the direction from the Plan Commission on some of these items, it was, we have a detailed document that deals with park and recreation facilities, like literally the boots-on-the-ground component of it, that that's where that should lie. And that document is updated every five years to be eligible for grant monies through WDNR and others. I think there are probably a handful of things that may have been installed in the last couple of years that aren't effectively referenced, because like I said, we didn't go out to each park to do an inventory. We pulled from the most recent corp.
Yeah, I'm not so concerned, I don't think about the inventory. I'm more concerned about the trend, and is there a way to recognize those trends? And there might be more than just the one I laid out there. But is that appropriate for this document?
It's not inappropriate. The question becomes, is, you know, what level do we want the comp plan to get into here? Because usually it's kind of a, you know, 5,000-foot level. But if we're if Plan Commission and Council are suggesting that we should start converting tennis courts or you know, I
Do we own tennis?
Certainly could mention that here.
I don't think the city has tennis courts, I think they're all school.
There's arcs or there's Rotary, I don't know that they're tennis courts, but there's paved surface, so.
Okay.
Middle School does, otherwise, is there anything else in Lake Mills?
High school.
High school has?
Yeah.
We certainly can add discussion of I don't say newer, but higher-desired recreational facilities. And, you know, maybe it gets back to talking to the constituency more often about what facilities do you want to see and where? Maybe that is more the goal of the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, I guess what I'm kind of, as I read this, I was looking for maybe a recognition of what the trends are, and is there assets that in our recreation plan that are currently missing that maybe we should be considering for the future? You said that maybe it's in another document, but should it be included here, I guess is my question.
I think
Maybe my desire is to add it.
I think in the comprehensive plan, it should have more of the regular outreach to the residents that includes, you know, school-aged children about the city's recreational facilities, the, how they kind of view the park system. I mean, we asked in the survey about, are they using the parks, which ones, how often, or when's the last time they were there? But, you know, one of the things that we've reiterated that has come out of talking to the public was they want to be talked to more. This probably is one of those areas we should say more attention to talking to the residents about specific parks and specific recreational facilities to see what they like about the current parks, not in a general sense, but actually the programming in individual parks, what things they would like to see added that they, recreational facilities that they're looking for. I think that would be the role in this document. And then leave it to the Comprehensive Outdoor Rec Plan to really get in the details for each park or those specific programming elements.
Yeah, I think certainly a reference to being a city goal to continually monitor park and recreational opportunities and trends for incorporation into our offerings to the community could certainly be something that could be added to it as a goal of the city that's included in its comprehensive plan, since those trends and amenities may change before the next iteration is adopted by the City Council of this document. So pickleball is one thing you mentioned, splash pads is another that has really gained a lot of popularity in recent years. But those can change as well before we adopt the next one. But I certainly think it would be appropriate for the city to have a goal in the comprehensive plan to monitor those trends, to ensure that we're offering amenities that are going to continue to attract and add to the quality of life of our residents.
Okay, thank you.
Any other issues that council members wanted to bring up?
On Chapter 7, which I think is economic development, the the chart table 7-6, can we please double-check those numbers? And I don't want to talk under mic right now, but I can tell you later which one specifically you need to look at. On this chapter, it refers to smart growth in the implementation plan, but I'd like to see more smart growth built into this chapter.
I'm sorry, can we back up? You said in table 7-6 or on page 7-6?
7-5, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
It's on page 7-6.
Thank you, I just want to make sure I'm getting the right reference, okay.
The employers, Steve.
So this is where we talked at our last meeting about smart growth. It was part of the implementation plan, and it would be really nice to have that valued a little bit more in this chapter, at least referenced in this chapter. So it would be nice if it could be reviewed and and implemented in some way. I don't have specifics, but it just seems like that that should be referenced in this chapter. And then there's a, there's an outcry in the community for office space right now in the community of Lake Mills. And I know I lived that firsthand two years ago when I was kicked out of an office space when the building I was renting was sold, and I had to move the business to a local city, to a city nearby. But it would have been nice to have stayed in Lake Mills, and I know there's a lot of people looking for office space. So I wonder if there's a way to look at our inventory of business facilities within the town? And is there inventory that should be called out that maybe we need more of? And is there ways to address that? Is there ways that that the city can address those needs, if that makes sense? And then on page 718, it talks about the training culture in Lake Mills. And I think that's a great idea. I'm concerned about what makes Lake Mills unique, because we're using local colleges that are from Madison and Milwaukee. Is there local resources that makes Lake Mills unique that we could use here in Lake Mills? Maybe county resources, I'm thinking workforce development, literacy council. I know there's other organizations in Jefferson County that are a little bit more local that maybe could help with that training aspect and be, become a better tool for our employers and make Lake Mills a little bit more unique than using colleges from Madison and Milwaukee.
So in the document, we reference the technical college system, because you do have UW Extension in Jefferson County, and both Madison College and M A T C, referencing Milwaukee, have these programs. So again, while we're referencing Madison College, that is your technical college area. But it's hard to ignore, Waukesha County is so close that, you know, I'll say, in our minds, there's kind of overlap of constituency there. So we aren't referencing Madison universities. We are referencing those entities that are tasked with providing these resources or opportunities to this county.
Right.
So I'm wondering, is that not sufficient?
I think that's part of the game, but I think there's more to the game than that that makes Lake Mills a little bit more unique, and what are those resources that can help our local employers?
So is there something particular you would want to see in the plan to reflect that?
Well, I outlined two, I'm sure there's more than that. Mr. Daley may have a better handle on it as being part of the economic development. He's on the Jefferson County Economic Development Board.
There are certainly offerings, events, programs that Jefferson County Economic Development Consortium have, do offer. So we can circle back and connect with them and see if there's specific programs we want to call out. But there have been, they have hosted training events, employment events, things of that nature to try and tap into local talent that we may not be taking advantage of, or to build up local talent. So I think there are some other things that we can specifically call out to make it a little bit more tailor-made to the region.
So that's the main things that I had to address. It's basically to beef up the document, it's not to take away from the document, but there's some areas that we can address better, that can help the community and give us a better long-term plan moving forward. So I hope that helps.
Absolutely.
Okay, hopefully I've got a list that matches what the staff have and what everybody's brought up so far. Are there any other issues or questions or comments from council members?
So I would suggest that we maybe try to go through the list of the different things that have been brought up. And number one, I'd be interested in a call on whether they're non-substantive, so that they could just be addressed without necessarily a referral back. And then if they are substantive, then I guess we'd have to, you know, discuss also whether we have a majority in favor of sending it back. Dustin?
If I can add to this, I've attempted to take copious notes on this, to reference this. I can share the list so you can perhaps see it and then correct or, as I tried to speak and talk. Give me one second, because I do have to go and get into Zoom and
Ms. Kurler, if you have notes typed, Mr. Wolf, should we print those off and just have a copy in front of us and go over them? Or I also, I just typed up my list that I had, I don't know if you want to merge them or?
Should we take a recess?
Yeah, why don't we, I would make a motion for a five-minute recess so that Dustin can print out his list, and then we can all be looking at the same thing, and then email it to Mr. Fields. Is five minutes sufficient? Second.
Yes.
All in favor, raise your hands. Okay, so Steve, they'll email that to you, and we'll come back in five.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, does everybody... Mr. Fields, did you receive the document by email?
Looking right now. I just heard that, just heard a ding.
Okay.
Let me try and get it updated. It hasn't updated yet.
Okay. Make sure you have it and then we can go back on the record.
All right, it just showed up.
All right, we'll go back on the record after recess and we've all received a draft list from Mr. Wolf with a list of the topics that we've discussed tonight so we can go through them. And I also was advised by Attorney Drescher that if we do decide to send any issues back to the Plan Commission, it really probably doesn't matter if they're substantive or not because we can just send them the list and ask them to address them and, and leave it at that. So we probably don't need to distinguish. Okay. So the first item was hotel tax. Consider, change the language to say consider rather than mandating the council to do that. So why don't we just discuss these? Does anybody have any support or objection for that? I'm in, I would be in support of that, asking for that change.
Good.
Okay, looks like most people are in support of that. Okay, same thing actually then with the next two items on page 510, wastewater treatment plant, language should be softened to be more in the consider realm, then we will build the new plant. On page 511, storm water utility. Clarify any confusion that might be beneficial. So would we want that to remain on the list though as far as, so that we would want some clarifying, clarifying language to reinforce that the context is for workforce housing on a, you know, evaluated on case-by-case basis, something like that? Mr. Waters?
I think Mr. Fields brings up a good point. I mean, there are other regulations out there, just on the bicycle side, since I, I beefed up on that a little bit. On the bicycle side, there are federal and state guidelines that, that say that bicycle transportation facilities and pedestrian walkways should be considered where appropriate in conjunction with all new construction and reconstruction of transportation facilities except where bicycles and pedestrian use are not permitted. Seems like that kind of falls into the guidance of when you look at narrowing streets, you kind of need to review that as well, I would imagine, right?
Yeah, I think, this is a difficult one in that what a, what the specifics of a particular street should look like does not always fit well into a general statement on street width, right? So there, I think, street, narrowing streets has a number of benefits, right? Ongoing maintenance costs, cost of installation, speed control. Depending what the goal of a specific street is, it's going to, we're going to tailor what the design of that street looks like going into the future. So I think we'll, when we are looking at road reconstructions or new development or anything of that nature, we should always evaluate what that road looks like and whether it is designed to its best use currently. So I don't know if that's helpful to you, but I don't want to, I don't want us to ever think that just because we put in, you know, a, a general statement about things to consider that we won't continue to evaluate them on a case-by-case basis because there are, there's going to be situations in which a wider street is more appropriate and there's going to be instances where a narrower street is inappropriate. Now, a narrower street doesn't necessarily mean that it won't have certain things on it like bicycle infrastructure or, or other things like that, but it would, it won't have everything that a 32-foot wide street is going as far as parking on both sides, you know, space for sidewalks, parking on both sides, perhaps on-street bicycle infrastructure, things of that nature. So, you know, goals are helpful, but we will still evaluate it as we redesign and design new, new construction.
So Mr. Fields, what, what would your thoughts be on, you know, given the discussion, what would you prefer to see on page 615?
I guess with the explanation, I'm fine either way. Just going through this, it just, I'm looking at, there's a lot of sections with, I see this document is, it's giving a lot of our staff and different agencies direction on how they should do stuff before it's going to come to us. So I guess what my view is and what we've been working through with widening things, making sure every street has sidewalks, all this stuff, we tended to be bigger than that. But I understand where it's coming from and it's going to be a case-by-case type item.
Mrs. Bishop?
Well, to address the idea that it's really a case-by-case issue, I think we should remove the specific reference to the width of the street being 26 feet and leave that to be general and ask the Plan Commission to reconsider that specific foot recommendation or to strike it.
Yeah, that seems to be a pretty simple solution. Just refer, remove the reference to 24 feet and then, but then there's still all the considerations for why we might want to narrow any particular street would still be in there. Does that, does that make sense to you, Mr. Fields?
Yep, that would work for me.
Other people comfortable with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Next one was add Economock Hospital to the regional assets. Everybody okay with that? Okay. Restatement that Ms. Quinlan was happy with the document. Okay.
I didn't know these were going to be public notes.
No, that's okay, sorry. I didn't have to read that.
I objected to that one.
Yes. Haven't voted yet. Okay, so under implementation, pages nine dash two and dash three, softening the prescriptive language about annual review of the plan, again, kind of along the lines of making that, you know, something that we could consider to do in our monitoring. Are people okay with softening that language? Senior Center goals, objective or policy? I don't, attributed to me, I don't remember what I said there.
Ms. Curler, on that point, you, you did say senior center specifically, but I heard you speaking more generally about the needs of our senior citizens that would keep them here, more so in reference to housing and a housing product. And Mr. Wolf has spoken previously about like zero-lot line houses to reduce need for yard care or, you know, I see it as like single, single-floor homes to reduce needs for steps. So that was the context that I saw your comment in. I don't know how we can broaden that for what's going to go back to the Plan Commission.
Yeah, I would just strike that. I think I was actually complimenting the plan for addressing those issues.
Oh, I see.
From citizens. So yeah, I wasn't raising a correction or anything like that. So the next item, future land use map corrections, I did identify two things that I thought should be looked at and, and updated. Okay with that? Just having the Plan Commission take a, take a relook at the future land use map?
On that one, you also mentioned the citizen comment that you had received, so there might be at least three there.
Right. Well, there was the...
There was the land north of St. Paul's.
The land north of St. Paul's? Oh, yeah, Dan, it looks like Dan, something with Dan's initials. Maybe you have something from, on South Main?
Yeah, just a couple of parcels that were mislabeled.
Okay, so there's a parcel that you're, parcels that you're aware of, there's the property north of St. Paul's and the other one that I mentioned was the Summer Ridge Apartments. Yeah, that's, the future land use map is not consistent with their current land use.
So a general review of the land use map for correctness and accuracy?
Yeah, and then those, those three would be, I guess, examples. Are everybody okay with that? Okay. Okay. Then the next issue is that Mr. Waters brought up regarding the demographics and what's going on with reduction in over 65 in our community, putting more context in the document. I don't remember if you had a particular chapter that you felt that that would go in. Was it maybe in chapter one where that statistic was referenced?
No, it was...
Chapter one.
Was it chapter one?
Yeah, you'd reference the comments. That's what I had.
That's, I think that's where the general, some of those general, you know, community changes are listed.
Right, that's where you started your chapter-by-chapter review. With chapter one, I thought. That's what I had in my notes, Mr. Waters.
And then I went to the vision statement, correct? So it was chapter one.
Okay.
Just to clarify, included in that, would the council agree that perhaps an emphasis on attempting to attract 55 plus older facilities, community housing options, something that the council would be interested, interested in the Plan Commission exploring?
Sure.
I think so. I mean, certainly that's strongly reflected in, in the public comment from the survey and the written comment that we received last week. That's definitely is reflected.
I like the wording that you gave.
Yeah, I don't know. I know one of the issues that you brought up, Mr. Waters, was kind of the why question, you know, why is this happening when it's inconsistent? And I don't know that we know the answer, but I think it's still, you know, something in the document to indicate that that, that's noteworthy, that in our community, that number seems to be decreasing.
And there might be some strategies on how to circumvent that or attract that, that population group?
Yeah, which is kind of what Mr. Daley was saying, so, yep. Okay, so is everybody comfortable with some direction along those lines? Okay. Okay, then we talked about the strategic plan and the vision statement between the two documents. So there's a note to incorporate the strategic plan into the comp plan, somehow refer to it and indicate that we create that and develop or update that on a regular basis.
We had talked last week about, the comprehensive plan does talk about the, the priorities from the strategic plan, but calling them out better, right? Maybe there's an icon, maybe, because they are in different portions of the comprehensive plan. This is just also a note for me that we should have a section that says, that talks about that there is a strategic plan, that the council does update it regularly. So I would say it's kind of a two-prong approach, one about, you know, highlighting strategic plan and the other where there are elements of the strategic plan that are, that are discussed in the comprehensive plan that we're calling them out in those locations. If that makes sense? They're in there. I mean, when you look at your strategic plan, I know Mr. Daley had it up a minute ago, you talk about Sandy Beach stuff. Most of the detail on Sandy Beach redevelopment is really in the corp.
Emergency services, wastewater treatment plants, communication, infrastructure.
Yeah.
I think those are some of our strategic goals. Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's a good idea to kind of reflect where there's an issue that's highlighted in the comp plan that also aligns with the strategic plan to identify that. I don't think you have to like exhaustively look for every reference to Sandy Beach and say that's in the strategic plan, you know? But yeah, just I think some way to...
You, I have the plan now. You talk about public safety and providing dependable emergency services. We do talk about that in the community facilities chapter, a little bit on wastewater treatment. Staffing and financial prioritization, that's not, we don't really get into the details of that here in the, in the plan. You talk about communications, infrastructure and capital improvements. We do talk, like, it says promote improving water quality, encouraging residents to take advantage of lead line grants. I think we do mention the lead line stuff in here. So there are places that we can try to highlight.
Mr. Waters?
At some point, there was a point in the document where you were talking about the type of equipment that our fire department has and it did not list the ambulance. It, it seems like that's something that should be added.
Catch.
Just to call that out and maybe update the whole EMS section a little bit. I know that this document, I think, is a May document and we were still using Lake Mills EMS at that point, but...
I think so. And I think when we started writing this, you were buying an ambulance and it hadn't happened or...
Okay.
Something along those lines. So yeah, we'll...
Yep.
A lot happened with EMS simultaneous, so...
Okay, so do we have enough direction on that item as far as sort of incorporating a reference? I think what I heard you say, Dustin, was both incorporating the fact that the council creates a strategic plan, it regularly updates it, and then some references to elements that are in our strategic plan, where they appear in the comp plan. And everybody's good with that? Okay. Let's see, mobile homes was the next issue, starting on page 313. Question about adding policy and programs for mobile home parks, particularly thinking ahead to planning for Sandy Beach. So was that, you would just be adding a, adding a policy statement around that?
I think it was just calling it out and kind of, yeah, adding a little more substance related to mobile homes as a, kind of a separate land use category to be, I don't know, discussed, monitored, evaluated over time.
Kind of a standalone.
Yep.
Section.
Yes.
Does that address your, your suggestion? Okay. Is everybody comfortable with that one? Michelle's, maybe not?
Yep.
Oh, okay. Let's see, oh, on the, again, back in the implementation, chapter nine, I had proposed for the ordinance updates to give a, a range of years for the Plan Commission to work on those and then a date on the electric utility expansion. People okay with that? Okay. Let's see, next one is in the transportation chapter regarding sidewalks and pedestrian paths. Mr. Waters, you asked for revising the statement at the top of page four dash six so that it aligns with the plan?
If, I, I know that that was a statement that was added by the Plan Commission. I'm not necessarily objecting to that statement, I'm just saying that it needs to be properly stated. It's not part of the plan. Does that make sense?
I think you could bifurcate that sentence somehow and create two sentences out of it.
Okay.
To make it accurate.
Just revise it so that it's accurate.
Yeah, right.
That'd be basically what you're looking for, okay? Everybody comfortable with that recommendation? Okay. Bike paths, this proposal to include, or reinsert map four dash two, but perhaps change the title so that it's clear that it came from the 2005 bicycle plan.
So Ms. Curler, we had a robust discussion about bike paths and Mr. Waters, what I heard you specifically asking for was to put the names back in and that's not reflected here in this document that we'd be asking unless it's on the next page.
Uh, no.
No. So...
Mr. Wolf.
Well, I just want to make sure we're being clear.
He said let him know if we missed something.
Yeah, please. I was trying to...
Well, then I, if, if we're going to be asking the Plan Commission to add in names, then we need to tell them here in this item, add in the old names. And I thought that's what you had recommended, so I want to make sure that's...
That is what I recommended, yes.
And that would be added names that were referenced in the old comp plan that were not carried over into the new one.
Maybe the earlier iteration?
Yeah, that's, that's what I want, but I'm not sure if the rest of the council's aware of, of that, that wording, so... aware of that wording, so, but that's my recommendation, yes. I'd have to go back and pull that up, or you could pull that up.
So the idea would be to reinsert the street names that were referenced in a prior draft, that referenced bike lanes? Oh, and that referenced the map?
Right.
Okay. And if you reinserted that, then you could refer to the map?
Right.
Okay.
So it's nothing different than what's included on the map, basically?
Correct. Yeah.
But then the separate recommendation was to retitle the map itself so that it was clear it came from the bike plan?
Yep, and that came from you, which I'm good with.
Okay, so the idea here would be to reinsert the street names that were in a prior version of the plan where bike paths would be recommended, and to include map 4-2 that had been in a prior version of the plan, but to retitle the map so that it refers where it came from, that the source was the bicycle plan. So, everybody with that?
And I would also delete the example that was stated that was not in alignment with the, with the bike plan.
The Oak Street to West Madison.
It's the example of Oak Street. Okay.
Although I think that is on the map, it looked like it was, was it?
You think it's on the map?
I think it is, but you want to delete the sentence reference.
I think, for example, providing a road bicycle facility along Oak Street across Lake Street.
Does the reference to the map with the updated title accomplish the goal?
Well, I would say strike that because it's not part of the bike map.
Sure.
Yeah.
The bike map does show Oak Street, so there's Commons Park, East Madison, Mulberry, and then Oak Street is the next one up, right?
Yes.
So the map does show Oak Street as it crosses over North Main, going westbound to West Madison, as a proposed bike route.
So how about if we have you look at the prior language with the street names, and then if that also includes Oak Street, then you wouldn't need the example because they would both be, you know...
It shows Oak Street coming off of Lake Street, but it doesn't show it going across Lake Street.
Oh, to the south.
Uh, south toward Water Street?
Correct.
Okay, for some reason I thought it mentioned West Madison, so I apologize, to the extent that it talks about crossing Lake Street, you're correct, Mr. Waters.
So our goal is that the language in the plan would align with the bicycle plan, that's really kind of the driver behind all of this. Okay, so does that, clear as mud?
Yes, no, I haven't.
Clear, okay. And everybody is comfortable with those recommendations?
And this is recorded, so...
Flipping over to the next page, we had a discussion about recreational programming trends. Drake, I think you had suggested that we could add a goal or include some language relating monitoring the trends and, you know, adding to facilities and programming based on those trends, but then not go into details of listing the specific recreational activities, for example.
Yep, as long as that accomplishes what the council's hoping to with that.
Mr. Waters, is that good at your end?
I'm reviewing the notes here real quick. So by outreach to public about parks and programming, we're not suggesting an outreach in the middle of this comp plan, are we?
No.
Okay.
No, it would be a goal for the community to undertake, probably assigned to park staff and...
Yeah, I guess I read it as kind of an, trying to maintain an ongoing conversation with the community on what they would like to see in their parks.
Awesome, perfect.
Is everybody else comfortable with that and supportive of that? Okay. Our next item, Mr. Waters, you mentioned some employment numbers maybe needed to be updated in table 7-5, so, and I think you offered to follow up on that?
Yep.
Okay. And I'm comfortable with whatever is needed to make it be accurate.
Correct.
Yeah.
It's all about accuracy.
Yep.
All right.
Okay, smart growth, more references to smart growth specifically in chapter seven.
I know that was an over-encompassing request, but does that seem like something that you could incorporate into, into chapter seven?
Absolutely, I think we can discuss it early on in the kind of introduction background chapter early on, and then specifically where there are, I'll say, recommendations that align with smart growth elements, and to make sure it's part of economic development.
Okay. It just seems like an element that was maybe missing, but we talk about it a lot at city council, and I know that the community in social media, they reference it a lot in social media, so it seems like it's something that should be part of the, part of the plan.
And it really ties to the foundation of why we do this plan, I mean, that's what the name of the law is, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, next one was office space. Mr. Waters, you were, you're mentioning maybe have a goal or add a goal to inventory office space, business space needs?
Yeah, it wasn't necessarily just office space, it's a high-demand area right now, but business space in general. I know that we have some, some sites in town that are, that are available, but maybe don't fit the exact needs of what people are looking for. But there may be more modern facilities that would be more fitting than, than some of those blight facilities that are in town right now. So, and I think that that's actually addressed in the section that there's, you know, certain buildings that maybe we need to look at how to, how to move forward with those buildings, but, but this would be an extension to that, I guess.
Sorry. Trying to call out that how can we meet some of our redevelopment goals while also providing the needed facilities or resources within the, for the business community?
Correct.
Yeah.
So this item would really be just adding some language and maybe a goal statement or a policy statement about doing some inventory and understanding the needs of the business community?
Right.
Is everybody in support of that? Go around, seeing nods, okay. Our last item we've got is training opportunities, and again, this is in the economic development context, looking for what other resources would, would be available in Lake Mills, or that we could use to help our businesses.
I think workforce development's not listed here, but that would be an important one to lean on, probably.
Mm-hmm, at the state level?
It's at the county level, isn't it?
There's a county as well? Okay.
Yeah, so what I'll do before the next time the Plan Commission looks at is reach out to the network that we have and get, try and get a list of what some of those opportunities are for workforce development within the county, and then bring that to the, the Plan Commission with some, a short description of what each of them is, and that that's a local service that's provided.
And I have a feeling that we're underutilizing that right now, and it would be nice to maximize those opportunities.
Okay, so that's the printed list that we have. Did anybody have an item that got missed from the list? Okay, and Dustin, do you feel like that the direction is clear on all of these? I think we only took one off, so...
That's okay. I just want to make sure the notes are accurate, we've obviously taken some more notes to fill in a little bit of the blanks, but, yes.
Okay, and then we'll have our recording here, if anybody wants to go back and listen, I guess. Any other items, I guess, last call for any other discussion items, or something that maybe was missed?
Ms. Curler, just a point of clarification for next steps, are we going to take a vote on adopting this and sending it back to the Plan Commission, or what's, how do you procedurally want to do it?
Well, I think we've talked, it seems like there is a considerable consensus on all these bullet points, so I think the next step would be a motion from the floor to refer the plan back to the Plan Commission to work on the issues that we've identified.
The only thing I'd like to offer as a clarification is once it's back to the Plan Commission, they're able to work on whichever piece they would like to, not just the things included in the resolution, so those are the council's suggestions to them, but once it's in their hands again, it's within their prerogative to decide what to work on and what not to work on.
Including the list that we sent them?
Correct.
They may choose not to work on some of those, and, but presumably we would get it back with a summary of what they, what changes they made.
Yes.
So then we would sort of know what action they took.
Correct.
And then maybe one other point of clarification I would make, any things that, you know, spelling errors, things like that, I know Dustin's ongoing doing that, you know, spelling formatting or whatever, so I think those are, we don't have to list any of those that we might have discovered, but you can always be updating for anything like that.
So we could forward those to Mr. Waters?
If you've identified something, I would say, do you want to get those, Drake, or do you want to have those come to you if this...
You can send them to me, or if you send them to Dustin, just copy me so that I'm not double sending him things or anything like that.
Yeah, it's, if we can just kind of repeat, the document that was put with the public notice for the open book period was the one that had gone through a rigorous QC process, somehow an older version kind of got uploaded with the council packet materials, and so we're hoping that many of them were addressed, because you may have been looking at an older iteration, so...
Well, hopefully enough eyes looking at it will, will catch all of those and have a really polished document when all is said and done. Okay, if there are no other items for discussion, then I'll entertain a motion, whatever motion someone wants to make.
Mrs. Bishop?
Okay, so one comment, and then I'll make a motion, I'm looking at this as kind of like a consent list here, so I would move to approve the items in this printed list for the comprehensive plan update for Plan Commission consideration, accepting and striking the list of streets for bike paths, and removing that for a subsequent motion and discussion. So what I'm asking for is to take out the list of the names of roads that we proposed for bike lists and consider that as a secondary motion and item.
Is there a second? Okay, no second on that. Would anyone else like to make a motion? Mr. Waters?
I'll make a motion to refer the recommended comprehensive plan back to the Planning Commission with the request that the plan be modified, revised, or mended with the attached recommendations from city council.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Ms. Quednaw, to refer the comprehensive plan update, recommended update, back to the Plan Commission to address the list of items that the city council has identified today. Any discussion? No discussion? All right, Mr. Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Quednaw?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you, everyone, and thank you for everyone's detailed attention to the document, I think we've done a thorough job of looking at it. So, given our decision on that agenda item, we will not take any action on the ordinance tonight, and we'll look forward to getting this back from the Plan Commission in the future. And with that, the meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.